Wait, is Budnick, he's traveling?
He's traveling, yes.
If you don't mind then.
Do your thing.
Hey, Budnick's out here, so I'll just spread out a little bit.
That clock is really good, too.
Well, that is a really random time to stop.
Yeah.
Yeah. What meeting was happening when the clock stuck still? Meeting is done.
All right.
All right, let me, we can rest here, hold on.
Traveler duties.
God.
It's a funny bone. Oops. Okay. All set? All right. Okay, we will call the June 11, 2024 Pleasant Ridge City Commission meeting to order. Could we have the Pledge of Allegiance?
Sorry.
What's that name?
That's my phone, listen to you.
The Pledge of Allegiance, two fifty flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
All right, could we have roll call?
Commissioner Budnick. Commissioner Lenko?
Here.
Commissioner Perry?
Here.
Commissioner Schmier?
Here.
Mayor Scott?
Here.
All right, we'll move on to public discussion items that are not on the agenda. Is there anyone, anything from anyone? Yes, sure.
Hi, I'm Deb Hemme, I'm the Director of your library, the Huntington Woods Library, and I'm here to talk about summer reading, and I brought props just for that. Yeah, so just for signing up, you get a free tote bag. You could, actually, none of you can, because this is not an adult prize. This is for kids or for teen tweens have this. So it's just one of the Raffle prizes, you know, every year, there's prizes, there's games, there's fun. The kickoff is this Saturday, that's when the program starts, runs till August 10th, and we are having, thanks to Shawnee, this was her great idea, we're having a sign up at your pool on Thursday from 5:30 to 6:30, so we'll be there and we'll help you get started on BeanStack, the tracker app, and we'll answer questions and do anything, anything else that you need, from 5:30 to 6:30 at your pool this Thursday.
This Thursday.
Yep, and then the whole thing starts on Saturday with a hula-hula party for kids and an escape room, like an actual escape room for teens, tweens, so, and a hearty pat on the back for adults. It's kind of more geared towards kids. We do have an adult program, too, so anyway, that's it, thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Cool.
Hi.
Hello, everyone, Jay Ahmed, 92, Kensington. I'm here because I have questions about the Water Service Replacement and Access Agreement that we just got and we're told we need to turn in, I think by tomorrow. Yes?
I'll confirm.
That's what we asked for, Olivia.
So, the agreement asks us to sign to give the city and the contractor permission to access and replace existing water services with lead piping. I'm going to just guess, that's a typo?
That's an interpretation of the language, it doesn't, that's not what the language actually says. There's a paragraph down further that clearly states that it will be replaced with one-inch copper. It doesn't say that we're going to place lead with lead, it just says if you have lead, galvanized, or copper that has lead soldering, and I don't have it in front of me, that it will be replaced.
It's the two widths and the sentence that make it a little weird.
Right, so it's, if you have lead, if you have galvanized, if you have copper that has lead solder, it'll be replaced with copper, one-inch copper line.
Yeah, I mean, I just, I mean, I think most of you know what I do for a living, and if a client came to me and said, should I sign this? My answer would be no, because this allows, this, what I'm signing literally allows them to replace my lead pipes with lead pipes. I respect what you're telling me here, but I'm signing this.
Read the language to me.
It says, "In accordance with the Michigan Lead and Copper Rule, the undersigned owner hereby gives permission to the city of Pleasant Ridge and/or its employees, agents, and/or contractors to excavate, investigate, and replace existing water services with lead piping, galvanized piping, or copper piping." So if I sign this...
Keep reading.
That's what it says.
Keep reading the sentence.
Says, "With lead piping, galvanized piping, or copper piping with soldered joints on the following property."
Yes, it's the two widths that make that a little confusing.
Read the, I mean, the first paragraph clearly states further down underneath that sentence. So, I mean, if you want to, if you want to argue this, we're not coming and putting lead in the ground, that would be ridiculous.
I suspect not.
Yeah.
I just thought it was oddly worded, the way that that's worded, but the next thing that's concerning to me is that we're being asked to sign a hold harmless agreement so that, and it just says that the owner will do the following, "Hold the city, its agents, employees, and officials, and the contractors harmless and free from any claim, suit, demand, or liability for any personal injury or property damage suffered or incurred in performance of the water service line replacement with the, at the owner's property as defined herein." Why in the world am I holding harmless a contractor coming onto my property to comply with law? So essentially, if they come onto my property and get hurt for whatever reason, they can sue me, but if they cause injury to my property, I can't sue them. You're asking me to hold thi-- they should be holding me harmless. I mean, you guys represent the citizenry. This agreement is skewed towards the contractor for reasons that are not clear to me. Contractor comes onto my land and screws up my property, causes an injury to someone in my family, and I've signed this agreement? I'm screwed, I've given away my legal remedies. Again, I would, someone comes to me with this, no way are you signing that. You would never sign a hold harmless agreement. If I have a plumber coming to my property, they don't make me sign a hold harmless agreement? They're responsible for their actions. And this agreement says that part of what the contractor is supposed to do is have insurance and provide proof of insurance so that they can cover any damage, but then four paragraphs later it says, yeah, but you're never going to be able to sue them because now you've, you're holding them harmless. Why? Why, why is the citizenry being asked to indemnify essentially the contractors who are coming onto our property by a legal mandate? And if they screw something up, they hurt my property, they hurt someone on my property, hurt someone next door, I could be held liable, but not the contractor? That makes no sense to me. I don't know who drafted this, if this was a lawyer for the contractor, but this is so skewed heavily towards the contractor, I don't, and yet, I'm being asked, I'm being told, if you don't sign it, well, guess what? You don't get the work done. I mean, I get that I have the option not to sign, but that's not fair. It's not right that now I, you're making a choice. I can either have my lead lines so I can be poisoned from lead, or you give away all your rights. That's, that's unacceptable. And you guys should know, you're supposed to be representing us in the citizenry, and this is not a good deal for the citizens. I will happily sign this, but I don't want to sign a hold harmless agreement, and I'd really love to know why it's in there.
What I'd suggest is getting in touch with Jim after the meeting and going through your concerns, as we suggested in the letter to everyone, if you have any concerns at all, just reach out to City Hall, have a conversation with the city, and we'll talk about it.
Okay, but I just, I mean, I was worried because it's, as my understanding is, I'm supposed to turn this in tomorrow, and I don't want to have not turned it in and then say, well, too bad for you, you're not getting your lead lines replaced.
Right. Just if you, if I may...
Yes, please.
So the, this was originally an agreement that we worked on with the city of Royal Oak, because they, at the time, were our water and sewer maintenance partner. So their city attorney had drafted this up when they were doing their service line replacements. Our city attorney, Greg Need, reviewed it, signed off on it. The reason for this language is because we are being required by the state, so essentially it's a third-party kind of situation where we have a contractor who's working for the city, but we're being required by the state to go onto private property and replace private or privately-owned infrastructure. So that creates some, that creates issues for us. It's not a contractor that you're hiring to bring on your property, of course, that's a different situation. The contractor, they're all reputable, they all have all the insurances that they need, but this was, this was the agreement that Royal Oak, their city attorney and our city attorney both drafted, reviewed, signed off on in the interest of protecting the entity, the city, who's essentially, we have to do this work. So if you have issues with it, I'd be happy to contact, to put you in touch with our city attorney. You are going to have to make your choice with this. This has been reviewed and again approved by the city attorney, so that's where we are. But moving that language opens us up to...
Doesn't open you up to anything other than what your responsibilities are. The contractor comes onto my property and screws up, they've got insurance. Well, in fact, you say they have insurance, and they had to provide proof of it to you, but then why do you indent? Why do you tell me that you have to hold them harmless? So in this agreement, it says these guys have all the protections, everything they need, but you can't sue them for anything they do to your property, Jim, that's exactly what this says. They do property damage or personal injury, I have no recourse. That's not right, and that, that should be taken out of this agreement. I don't know if Greg looked at it, I'm assuming he did, but if he's looking at it, he's looking at it from the perspective of, what can I do to protect my client, the contractor, or the city? He's not looking at this in terms of, what can I do to protect the citizenry of Pleasant Ridge? And that's where the priority should be, should be for, excuse me, all of you, is protecting us from any type of civil conduct that goes on our property. Again, this is mandated, and the choice should not be, well, live with, you know, lead poisoning or give up your rights. That's not, that's, it's not an acceptable choice, and it's not, it's not a necessary choice.
So as I said earlier, please reach out to Jim, just so that he can do what he said he did. If he'd like to talk to our city attorney, that would be the next step.
I'd be happy to connect you.
Yeah, thank you, though.
And your email address is on that letter, right?
Yes, thank you.
Yeah. Hi, Tom Carter, Love and Oakland Park. Actually, I agree with much of what he just said. I think that's unfortunate, and we'll probably have that conversation. But I'm here to actually, I wanted to, you probably haven't noticed at all, but on the PR/PR site, the other social media sites, there's been a fair amount of traffic about traffic, and I had a couple of observations that I thought may be worthy to bring to the table here. There's been a fair amount of discussion about the change of the timing of the traffic light in town on M1, and I went, I've looked at, I've been there a number of times during the day, in the afternoon and stuff, and there were seven cars lined up this afternoon. You could have gotten eight or nine cars through before the light turned.
Just for clarity...
I know there are times when it's down to like four or five cars.
If I may ask, is that Oakland Park Boulevard?
That's the only traffic light we have, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, I wasn't sure if you were talking about Woodward or Oakland Park, that's what I was...
Woodward and Oakland Park and Sylvin, that's our traffic light.
Okay.
Yeah, and the, and so I appreciate people's concerns, but here's where I think MDOT is really shooting itself in the foot, and given MDOT's status, is never here to deal with the ramifications of it, is that it now, I mean, if you think of traffic flow as water, and they just opened up the valve wider, right here at the corner, and yet they've constricted the, the lanes down to one from two. If you opened up the second lane, when they're not doing construction, which seems to be often, if they would just pull back their barriers, a lot of this pressure would be eliminated. I mean, if you open up that second lane, the traffic is now halved effectively, and if you take, if you open up that right turn lane on Main, traffic is, I bet you, more than double the cars that are able to go through right now in a single lane, turning right or going through, because the through traffic can just tear across in their normal fashion, and the right lane will segregate, you know, from that, and, and it'd be much better off. And it, how many days a week is no construction being done? Now, I don't know what, you know, what format of dialogue, you know, the city has with MDOT, but it seems to me that, that they, they're creating a problem two ways. One, by opening the valve and then constricting the flow. When there's no construction, they're only, it's only small crews, and they're not there every day. If they pulled those barriers back up above the curbs, when they're not, when they know they're not going to be working, and I realize that when they have to reestablish that, those barriers, it's, it's a thing, it's going to take time, and I get that, but it would, it would change everything. How do they, I can't imagine how they expect that expanding the, the time for traffic to flow north and southbound can be accurately judged when they've got construction going on, or at least barriers up, even when construction isn't active. And to me, I mean, this is, this is like, it's silly. It's, it's not even logical that this, this should be happening the way it is, when it would be so, the remedy is so easy. I don't know if, you know, Jim, I don't know what, like I said, I don't know what your, your access to, to MDOT or what their reception is, or if you can find yourself in a position to advocate, but, you know, it seems just like there's, there's so much consternation going on when it, to me, the remedy seems really fairly simple. I have every confidence that once all of this is done, everything's going to be fine. I mean, all of the Chicken Littles about traffic have, I mean, on other elements of this, it hasn't proven true at all, you know? Traffic is flowed, things are moving, everything's fine, people are kind of automatically slowing down because it's two lanes and it feels a little tighter, and I don't think people, you know, regularly get all the way up to 45 miles per hour, you know, between 696 and, and at least Oakland Parker, you know, on the southbound side, because it feels a little bit more restricted, which is great. I mean, we would love to have 35 miles per hour like, like Ferndale does, I'm sure, but on the southbound, on the northbound side, it just seems, I, I understand people's complaints that the, the traffic gets loaded during drive time, especially the evening drive time, when I think the remedy is, is fairly simple on the days when they're not doing construction, and on the days they are doing construction, they could still pull those barriers back.
So I know that the city meets with MDOT on a very regular basis, so we'll bring this one up along with other things that we bring up on a very regular basis.
I'm hoping that people are telling you about times of day, like what you asked for.
Three to four is generally, it sounds like, when, when the main issue is the worst one.
Yeah, like I said, I was there just, just before 3 o'clock, and it was, the timing may change, but...
Sure.
I mean, like I said, I was the, I was the fifth car in line, and there were two behind me, and they got through, and there was time before I noticed that on the other side that...
And part of the reason I asked you which lights is because I know that they've also changed the timing of the lights on Woodward and Main and 696 just a little bit, and it might have something to do with the fact that they're installing these wrong-way monitors or something along the same. I just noticed it being on Devonshire, so that's probably added to this, I don't know if it's temporary or permanent, but some of the pressure we're seeing as people are heading northbound into Royal Oak, I'm not so sure I'm seeing it as much southbound into Ferndale, and there are times of day when I see cars a little stacked up heading west from Sylvin onto Oakland Park Boulevard...
Right.
And less frequently heading east onto Sylvin or onto Woodward, to my observation.
Yeah.
But we'll bring it up, just because there's, we have a list.
Right, thanks.
Thank you very much.
Sure, just one question with regards to like, when the project's going to have a big pretty bow on it, do we know like what that end date is going to be, like roughly? I know it's a moving target, but...
Definitely moving target. They're in liquidated damages, they're paying $1,500 a day to us, every day that it's not complete, and yet there still doesn't seem to be a lot of motivation, so there's been a lot of schedules, and this contractor has kept none of them. So, I don't know. And they are, they are an MDOT contractor, this is an MDOT contract, so we are a little bit on the side, we don't have the same level of communication with the contractors we normally would, so I don't know. That's my best answer.
They're feeling pain and...
Oh, they're feeling pain, yeah. I think we're up to $100,000 of liquidated damages that they're being assessed, so that's pain.
Thank you. Well, we've been off to a light start. Are there any other topics for public discussion? All right, seeing none, I think we'll go on to our liaison reports, the first one's from me on Ferndale Public Schools. Some good news, Lower Elementary had their ribbon cutting yesterday, and I have to say, the building is great. If you get a chance to go see the building, it's clear that they did everything possible to make it a good learning environment with all the modern tools that you would expect in a, in a public building, and then it was just warm, like you walk in and it felt like a place that you'd want to take your kid to. And I know that was part of their endeavor, the, the head of the PTA mentioned how while the building was being constructed, they went in and they actually signed the beams and filled it with, you know, words of affirmation, and the contractor was freaking out, they're like, what do we do with all of this writing on the beams and everything? But it was just a really warm, welcoming building, and, and it started off well, so definitely, when it's open, even if you don't have kids, just take a look at the building and see where the kids are going, it'll give you a good feeling about the school district. They should also be in contact with the folks in Pleasant Ridge that would be affected by their move-in in July to Roosevelt. I imagine that's supposed to happen the week of July 4th, I think is the last thing that I'd heard from them, so if you live on Cambridge or Oxford, you might get something from the school district, or just will be notified if, if the schedule changes. And that's all I've got for the school district tonight.
It was great. It was nice, yeah.
Beautiful. Good turnout.
Mm-hmm. Onto Commissioner Lenko.
Thank you, Mayor. So with regards to planning and downtown development authority, I'll again reiterate the importance of filling out the survey. The link is on the city website, it also has its own fancy URL called PleasantRidgePlans.com. Survey's open through the end of this month, so another 20-ish days. Next on the agenda is the Ice Cream Social, where McKenna will have the results of the survey compiled, and also concurrently another idea gathering event. So during the Ice Cream Social, there will be another kind of planning event with the results from the survey, and then just after the Ice Cream Social is the next Planning Commission DDA meeting. They meet quarterly first, or sorry, the fourth Monday of every month, which will be July 22nd in this, in this room. So please complete the survey if you have not yet, and Jim, we asked this last month too, but it is open to every individual in the household, not per household, so if there's four-person household, you're more than welcome to complete four surveys, so that's all I have. Thank you.
Well, all four of you are welcome.
Correct. Individual results.
Yes.
It's not tracking ISP and, right, like, right, there's...
We're not getting to that level.
Onto Commissioner Schmier for Historical.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to keep it short. Number one, museum is open this Saturday, 10 until noon, so stop by, check out your folder, bring pictures of your house to put in the folder, so this Saturday. Also, if anyone can't make it during the weekend and wants to set up another time, you can always reach out to me, or to Historical, or even to City Hall, they can get in touch with Historical to set a separate appointment, so if you can't make it on the third Saturday, definitely feel free to reach out. The last thing I'll say is that houses that are turning 100 or have turned 100 in 2024, letters went out three weeks ago, maybe a month ago, and you can now order a 100-year tile. You will do that through City Hall, and if your house turned 100 in the past, but you didn't get a tile and now really want a tile, definitely also come fill it out. Powabik is a little bit delayed, so we are taking orders now, and we expect them in the first quarter of 2025, so it is a little bit of a wait, but place your order now.
If my house is 75 years old, can I have three-quarters of a tile?
You cannot have three-quarters of a tile. No, nope. Only 100-year. And also, if you didn't get a letter, but you think your house is 100 years old, definitely reach out to Historical, because we're going through, you know, old records, but old records can sometimes be wrong, so let's talk.
All right. Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
And Commissioner Perry, Arts Council.
Thank you. So the Arts Council did not meet in April, but the work continues. The consultant of, that the Arts Council selected, Ralph Nunez from Nunez Design, has been conducting listening sessions and workshops with different stakeholders in the community, and I've been hearing lots of great feedback, everyone was excited to be, to talk about different opportunities for, you know, art and how it could be, could benefit our city. And they're also, we are planning a series of workshops for the evenings of July 22nd through July 24th, so mark your calendars, and we'll be updating you with more information as those dates get closer. There is also, you know, so you, you know, a lot of you filled out this survey for the arts thing, that is different than the city survey for the, the planning, so just know that there are two surveys that were, the arts one is closed, but this one is still open, and hopefully everybody will dive into that. And then the Arts Council will meet on Wednesday, July 19th, right here at City Hall at 4:30, so we will, we'll continue the mission. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, on to governmental reports.
Good evening.
Oh, go ahead.
Oh.
Yes, please.
Okay.
Thank you.
Chief.
We'll hit recreation later.
Good evening. Just wanted to take this opportunity to formally introduce our newest officer, Officer Kristen Carr.
Hello.
Hello, Officer Carr.
Oh, God, I forgot to turn to the front.
She's been with us for a little over a month, so you may have seen her on the streets. Kristen worked in a agency for eight years before coming to us, and we are just thrilled to have her, so...
Welcome.
Welcome. Thank you. Did we meet you at the foundation auction? Were you there?
I was there.
Yes, that was great to meet you.
I met a lot, I met a lot of people, so...
I know. Right there. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for having me.
Yeah, thank you, welcome.
Yep.
And she's out.
She's out. It was just good timing, she was working this evening, and I said, oh, come on around the corner.
Thank you.
So just wanted to fill you in on this past month, it has been a very boring month, which is a good thing, very minimal reports, I'm not going to run, give you a rundown of everything like last month, just the normal stuff, accidents, medicals, one vehicle that decided to make a poor decision and run from one of our officers, but all is well. Traffic-wise, I'm sure you see us, we are out there constantly, people keep asking, are you monitoring the noise? Officer Lippa, who just left an hour and a half ago, actually had to replace the batteries in the noise meter, so we are using the, the decibel meter, we are waiting those tickets. Officer Johnson was out there the other night when I was in here, and he had a couple people stopped and got some loud noise. That's basically where we're at, we're, we're just going through enforcement and doing our best to keep the decibel level down. And then briefly, on the traffic light issue, Jim and I had spoke about that a couple weeks ago, about the very brief timing at Oakland and Woodward, it was 10 seconds, so by the time someone was... So by the time someone was not paying attention and they look up and see the screen, you're getting one or two cars through, contacted the road commission, because road commission does do a lot with those lights. However, they are just, if those lights are out, they have nothing to do with the timing. Timing comes from the engineers at MDOT. I've been attempting to navigate that issue. So if I get through, I will let you know at the next meeting and let you know what the result is.
Awesome.
Actually, I've spoken with the MDOT engineer.
Okay, excellent.
Let's talk after the meeting.
Sounds good. Excellent. Any other questions or anything that I can help you with this month?
No, thanks for, I know there were a lot of people that were concerned about the noise issue and we're doing what we can.
We are.
Yeah.
We are, so.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Recreation.
Good evening. So we're in full swing of summer at the RAC Center, so we are in week five already of swim team, if you can believe that or not.
Wow.
Day two of summer camp.
Wow.
Yep, and week three of the swimming pool. So we are grateful for lots of local teenagers and their families for making sure to get kids to and from swim practice and to camp. So thank you to all of them. Without them, we wouldn't be able to do any of this. So we do have a couple of events at the pool. This is something that I emailed out today in eBress and it's all over our social media pages. We have lots of events coming up at the pool, is what I'd like to talk about today. So tomorrow evening is pride swim at eight o'clock, so please share with your local residents.
How late does that go, Shawnee?
Eight to ten.
Eight to 10 p.m. for pride swim, okay.
So that's an adult-only event. It's really nice, by then everybody's gone and it can just be a really fun adult evening at the pool. Deb was here earlier to talk about, this is just kind of a sidebar, but I did see on Facebook, the PRPR page that somebody was talking about, that they weren't familiar that we share services with the library. So Deb and I are working really hard to make sure that Pleasant Ridge is always included, which includes bringing them on-site for some programming too, to hopefully get those people that weren't aware that we are doing lots of programming with them. So hopefully we'll get some new people there, because like she said, the reading program is not just for kids, tweens, it's for adults too. Any readers in the house, it's for. So hopefully we'll get everybody at that event. And that's Thursday at 5:30 and they're gonna be under the pool pavilion. The family campout is this week Friday, so it starts Friday night at six and goes all the way through Saturday morning at 10. So we're gonna have dinner, ice cream truck, face painting, just a bunch of different things happening. Ten p.m. movie, so let your resident, or let your fellow residents know that we'll be a little bit loud back there, but under control.
What is that, the campout?
It is the campout, yep. And we're thankful for the foundation to sponsor that event again for two thousand dollars. Yep.
It's Friday.
Nice, great.
And then June 24th, we do have our first home meet, so the pool closes at 3:40 that day. So please make that know if you have any event, special events that you're trying to host at the pool on that day. July 17th, Ice Cream Social will be at the pool. So that is a free event. Thank you to Robert Campbell that's supplying the ice cream. But we do ask that everybody please register, pre-register for that, so we have enough ice cream. Like everybody has mentioned, McKenna will be there. Helena's Zax office will be there. So we have lots of events. Oakland County is sponsoring some events too, so.
Oh, Helena Scott.
Yep, she's gonna have a table too and she's gonna have some, some fun freebies for everybody too.
Shawnee, is it gonna be open to, I, in the past, I know the Ice Cream Social, there was a limit on number of people. Is this, is it gonna be limited this year?
So we never really like to limit it. Everybody in the city is welcome to come. We don't do resi, or guest passes that day.
Okay.
But we just like to get a head count, so we have a nice, enough ice cream. So we just ask that people pre-register, but there's not a limit as long as they're pre-registered.
Awesome, okay, thank you for clarifying.
Because ice cream is five dollars a cup, so we don't, we don't have a place to store leftovers and then we just definitely don't run, run out either, so.
Absolutely, thank you.
Yep, you're welcome. And then the family splash bash, that's gonna be on Monday, July 22nd. That is a new event this year and it's gonna be really fun. There's gonna be some parent-kid swimming relay, there's water balloon fight, so it's just a big fun water fest that night, so. And that's after the pool closes as well. And then we do have paper shredding. Thank you to Kirsten for always helping coordinate that at the RAC Center, but that's gonna be an overflow lot and that is June 22nd from 10 to 2.
Oh.
What's the format? Like, can you just bring boxes of paper?
Yeah, I think it says everyone's limited to two boxes, but you get some people that bring a half box and some people that bring three boxes. Oh, yes, you do, yes.
Send it through to you yourself, okay.
It's really fun and they'll stay out there to see all that paper getting torn up at one time, it's very fun.
Mega commercial kind of?
Oh, yeah, it's a whole big truck, yeah.
Beam at a time or something?
Oh, like a whole box at a time.
Oh, my God.
Like things that you see on TikTok. Yeah, the ASMR. Yeah, it is a really nice service. They provide for, oh, I'll say free, but wrapped into your taxes and stuff. But there's no payment due onsite. And then the Riddger will be in the mailbox as the last week of June. That has some really good information for July, August and September. So if there's any questions that anybody has, please keep encouraging people to come to the events. To pre-register is key, 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 key to all of our successful programming.
And your, yours, all of your posts and everything are very helpful, thank you.
Yes, thank you. We try to make it easy. And big thank you to Robert for also funding the Ice Cream Social.
Yeah, that is really great.
So that's huge.
And a quick one, the big rivalry is the, I saw Principal Katie at the thing yesterday.
Oh, the Huntington Woods meet.
The 24th, right?
Oh.
I'm just going for numbering now, but that's, let's get everybody out there, that's gotta be a big one, so. And I heard through the grapevine, we may win this year too, which.
Well, we do have two-hundred-and-seven swimmers, so I think we have more swimmers than Huntington Woods this year for the first time in fifty years.
Let's go cheer them on.
I know, yeah.
Eat them up for us.
So if, I, I don't know if anybody here remembers Anne Harold, she used to be the coach of the swim team, you would do, and now Emily Harold is our swim coach. So it's been a nice Pleasant Ridge legacy for as long as I can remember, and I remember, so, yeah.
Thank you.
Anything else? I know.
It's very exciting.
I want him to go to bed. Oh, thank you very much, thank you, everybody, thank you. See you guys tomorrow.
Thanks, thanks, Ramon, I'll talk to you later.
Just a side comment about the library stuff with the village coming up, that's a good idea to get it out there.
Yes, yeah, anyone in Pleasant Ridge that signs up for the library in Huntington Woods has access to, I think, over fifty libraries in the area. So it's really worthwhile to get signed up with their library. And it's a great library unto itself. And they've been a great partner.
So just a note on that too, we do have a couple of residents that are homebound. So with the book drop that we have at the RAC Center, when they come to pick up books, they'll also drop off books that those people have requested, so.
That's wonderful.
Then we get those out and deliver it into the community too. So they go well above and beyond too, so.
Right.
It's very nice to work with them.
Awesome, thank you. All right. I think we'll move on to the consent agenda. Something I'll mention on the consent agenda related to the noise issue, you'll find a copy of the legislation in our, in our meeting packet. If you're, if you've not read it yet or gone to the state legislature site. It actually passed through the House of Representatives last week. I went up for that meeting last Wednesday and it'll go on to the Michigan Senate. A bill that State Rep Natalie Price put out there to stiffen the fines and also to help the enforcement of the law, just to sort of clean up the language. And their hope is to get that through the Senate before they go on break this month, but it could be until this fall that it passes, depending upon the other things. So you can read that. We've also put in our, we've done a recommendation for the, for the legislation. So you'll see that in the packet as well.
That's great, thank you.
Thank you. May we have a motion?
Mayor, I move the consent agenda be approved.
Second. My only comment is that the memo, the Natalie Price memo, is a great read for any, everyone, anyone who can't, doesn't want to read the actual, you know, bill. The memo is two pages, easy to read, easy to understand, and it was really, so I really encourage people to read it if you are concerned about the noise and want to know what's going on.
All right. All right, may we have a vote?
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmier?
Yes.
Commissioner Lenko?
Yes.
Mayor Scott?
Yes. The motion carries. I was waiting for the fifth and I. All right, onto item eight, the budget.
Yes. I'll spare you the dog and pony show this month.
Okay.
It was very good.
It was very charted.
No charts. I mean, I've got them, if you really want to. But.
And if anyone wants to see them, it was in last month's.
Packet.
Packet. And you can watch the meeting.
Right.
Yep, very informative.
But high points, the millage rates dropping from twenty-one point nine one four seven mils last year to twenty-one point six two nine one mils in 2024, so some relief on millage rates. Property values are going up five percent this year, so anyone capped under Prop A, we'll see their property value or their taxable value rather, increase five percent. So the local tax increases is somewhere between three and a half and four percent for residents, which lags what inflation was. And again, our inflation measurement is from October 2022 to October 2023. So we are well behind the curve on when all of that, those inflation measurements flow through the local government. It's usually an eighteen-month lag. So we anticipate further reductions in coming years with inflation and taxable value increases. Once again, it's a balanced budget. We are largely finishing projects that we've started. The biggest one for the coming year is the Kensington Water Main, will be a new project. Potentially the Oakdale Water Main as well, starting in fiscal year 25, although that is to be seen. We're still working on engineering plans and getting Eagle permit approvals and so. That, Oakdale will be next, next year certainly, although I'm not sure which budget year that will start in. Those are the high points. I'd be happy to answer any questions anyone has on anything in the budget. There's a summary in the agenda package, if anyone would like to read that. But we continue to be in, in solid fiscal shape.
Any questions or comments for Jim?
Mayor?
Yes.
No, the summary is, I think, an amazing overview for anyone who wants to sort of look at it and not die, you know, dive into all of the different specific numbers. But thank you, because that is your write-up. And then the write-up also for this month's meeting packet was great too. So thank you, it's very helpful.
Great, well, we'll need to go into a public hearing to capture any comments from the public on the budget. And we'll close that and then we'll have a vote on the budget. So I open the public hearing. Seeing no comments, I will close the public hearing. And, yes, would someone like to make a motion?
Mayor, I move the fiscal year 25 budget resolution be adopted as presented.
Second.
May we have a vote?
Commissioner Lenko?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmier?
Yes.
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Mayor Scott?
Yes, the motion carries. Well, we'll move on to item nine, a fee schedule update.
Yes, thank you. So the last time our fee schedule was updated in whole was 2015. It's nearly a decade. Inflation's gone up thirty-three percent since that happened. So given the next item on the agenda with a cost adjustment with the city of Ferndale for building department services, it was time to look at our fee schedule and bring that in line with current costs. So what's proposed in the packet is largely an update of existing fees. There, we're doing some changes. Probably the biggest change in the fee schedule is the way that we will fee and charge for mechanical, electrical, plumbing, refrigeration permits. In the past, there was probably four pages and it was dependent on what you did. If you're installing three circuits and four lavatories and three sinks and two plumbing fixtures, there's all, you had to, you know, okay, how many are we doing there? And it didn't really necessarily make much sense. The, the biggest cost driver for those, for those permits is inspections. Because every time we have an inspector come out, there's a cost for that inspector. Ferndale contracts with contractors for their plumbing, mechanical and electrical inspectors. So they're not in-house, so there's, there's just a fee for that. So rather than charging by the, by the circuit or light switch or sink, now it's just an application fee and then however many inspections that that job you're doing requires, you charge the fee for each inspection, because that's a direct relation to the cost that we bear. So some of, some of our neighboring communities are moving to that model. Hazel Park has been doing it that way and it's working well. So it's easier to administer and again, more directly applicable relationship between the cost for the service and the fee that's charged. The remainder of the fees have been updated based on staff time, a study of staff time of costs to public, to publish public hearings. Newspapers charge a lot more for public hearings because we're required to put things in the paper and so many things have moved away from the paper. So print media has increased the prices drastically from, compared to 2015 for simply publishing a public hearing notice, as we're required to do by law. So that's the broad overview of the fee schedule. I'd happy to answer any specific questions you may have about anything that's in there. But this is a combination of just cost increases, inflation and changing ways of, that business happens now. Going forward, my intent is to update this annually, so that we don't get in a situation where, you know, it's been ten years. Part of it is it's daunting to look at our old electrical and mechanical fee schedule and try to update that, just because it's, it's pages and pages and pages and pages. So this will make it much easier to keep this up to date going forward, just with inflation.
Right. Okay, any questions for Jim? All right, may we have a motion?
Mayor, I move that the 2024 city fee schedule be adopted by resolution.
Second?
Second.
May we have a vote?
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmier?
Yes.
Commissioner Lenko?
Yes.
Mayor Scott?
Yes, the motion carries. And related, item 10, the Ferndale Building Inspections Agreement.
Yes, thank you. So we have been under an interlocal agreement with the city of Ferndale since 2017. And since about 2020, we've been using them exclusively for our building department inspections. The city of Ferndale does have an on-staff building official, which is a benefit, a great benefit, because we can reach out to him and contact him anytime during the week. Previously, our building inspector was our building official, but he was a contract employee and would come here for a few hours a week. So there were lag times, just in terms of even getting an answer or contractors talking to him. So moving to the city of Ferndale has been a benefit with respect to building inspections and building official. Ferndale does contract with private inspectors for, as I mentioned, plumbing, mechanical and electrical for the trades. And again, that's a fairly common situation unless the city is so large that they can hire their own staff, but that's not common in this day and age. Ferndale has been losing money because we've been on 2017 rates with them. So it's the same situation of costs haven't been increased since 2017, so they're asking for that increase. We are also adding in some limited code enforcement support. Our police do cite code enforcement, so that's things like tall grass, unlicensed cars, junk, property accumulation outside the building. The police do that, but when it comes to actual problems with structures themselves, peeling paint, unmaintained buildings, fortunately, we don't have a large problem with that in the city. But the city of Ferndale will provide support for those code enforcement issues going forward, because they do have licensed and trained code enforcement professionals who do that. So we're adding that into the cost of services that they provide. That includes a few two to four sweeps of the city where they'll drive around and identify any issues that they see, but also complaint-driven enforcement. Fortunately, again, in Pleasant Ridge, we don't have a lot of this. We don't need to be largely proactive, but when we get complaints, it's good to have them as a resource to have them respond to that.
Right.
So the, we paid about thirty-two thousand dollars last year. Ferndale's cost of services to us was about forty-two thousand dollars, so they lost ten thousand dollars providing services to us. So then adding in the code enforcement, the proposed cost for this year would be fifty-five thousand and then that increases to sixty thousand next year and then an inflation rate multiplier thereafter. So we could go out to market for this, but given the fact that we have access all week during the business week to the building official and the fact that Ferndale is, has their contract trades inspectors, we'd be hiring largely from the same group of contract trade inspectors. And going with a private firm like McKenna or Safebuilt, there's, there's no cost savings here. And again, it's just a, it's a situation where we don't have a large pool of service providers who do building inspections.
Right.
It's not a large universe, so. I'm confident that this remains as good of a deal as we'll get for cost benefit.
It seems fair for both sides. And we know that Ferndale is sharpening their pencil right now on their entire budget, so it's no surprise that they would bring this to us.
Correct.
As one of many items they're trying to address, so it seems fair.
And just to reiterate, if we were to find our own, that then puts us in the situation too where we're limited in the number of days, right? Where like only one day or two, you know, it's not. Where like only one day or two, you know, it's not as, I'm sorry, I just can't talk today. It's less flexibility is where I'm going. So staying with Ferndale gives us more flexibility.
Yes, that's been a benefit of going with Ferndale, is in the past, we would schedule plumbing inspections from 8:00 AM to 9:00 AM, two days a week.
Yeah.
Because that's when the contract inspector we had would come down this way. So we're much more flexibility now, being with Ferndale. And for them, it's a benefit, because we just add on to their, their level of inspection so that they can have a little more availability with their inspector as well. So it does benefit everyone. And yes, going back to hiring someone on our own, we'd probably be back to that very limited window again.
Okay, great. Thank you for...
Just exploring that idea, though, I mean, I support this proposal and this deal, but like if in two or three or five years we want to make a change, what's our ability to terminate the contract and find our own, or?
Yeah, there's a, there's a termination clause built into the original contract. I believe it's 30 days' notice.
Okay, so it's pretty easy to get out.
Yes, we just have to provide notice, and then we are out. Yeah, 30 days' advance written notice.
Beautiful. Cool. All right, I think we're ready for a motion.
Mayor, I move that the First Amendment to the interlocal agreement with the City of Ferndale for building inspection services be approved.
Second, may we have a vote?
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Commissioner Lenko?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmier?
Yes.
Mayor Scott?
Yes, the motion carries. And now we're on to the Woodside Park noise petition. Did you want to say a word?
Yeah, I'll just, we did receive this petition, and before we turn it over to the petitioner, I did contact MDOT about this to inquire about the possibility, and they were very firm in saying that they only do noise studies if a construction project adds capacity to a freeway. The 6I6 project that's upcoming will not be adding capacity, it's just a rebuild of what exists. Therefore, MDOT will not conduct a noise study. And it was about as unambiguous a conversation and answer as you'll get from MDOT. So all the other considerations around this, that's just where MDOT's position is.
Sure.
So with that.
Yes, please.
Thank you. I'm Paula Curgelli.
Hi.
I'm Woodside. I'm block club president, and you got the petition. I'm not surprised at MDOT's response, unfortunately. I've been, we've been on the block since 1990, before the freeway opened, and so we rode our bikes on the freeway. And then over time, as the noise has started to increase, we've noticed the last five years in particular, the noise levels really out of control, not just during your peak times, not just Thursday night, where I love motorcycle night, but all day, all mornings, all afternoons, all evenings. Last summer, our block party was on the north side, and from four, from 2:00 to 6:00 in the evening, and we at Weathers, and we could hardly speak to each other because it was so loud. The size of the trucks certainly create more noise. The revving of the engines, it's just, over time, you're going to have, because of the volume, sound goes up. That's, that's science. And our walls, when they were built, were built for what they anticipated traffic being about five, 10 years into construction. So the walls weren't built for 30 years, 40 years down the road to help with sound. Troy, when they put the updates to 75, the City of Troy made a big presentation about sound because of the impact on the communities with now the new rebuild there. And so they did raise the walls much higher. I don't remember exactly what the increase was. They were thicker, and they were made with a different kind of brick to help with sound reduction. So our inquiry, especially after we all, once again, had to live with the amount of sound, was what could we do? A, we want to bring it to your attention, fully expecting MDOT to say, eh-eh, but what could we do? And all we want, because we think data drives decisions, is for them to simply do decimal readings, decimal readings, not like they did in the past, which is morning rush and afternoon rush. It really needs to be 24/7, just to see the differences, because if you don't have data, how can you shut it down? And so that was our, that's our appeal. I did send a copy of the petition in a letter up to, and Mayor Scott encouraged me to do that, which I did, up to Nellie Price and Helena Scott as part of their package, because it's, there has to be some solutions to what can be done to help reduce the noise. I'm not sure if the taller wall is really going to send the sound up and over, but at least it would give us something to feel like we have an opportunity. The amount of trees that are around there are not absorbing the sound. What greenery is going over the walls is not absorbing the sound. But the biggest picture that I understand from engineering friends is that the original walls, as they were built, were built not thinking 30, 40, 50 years down the way, in terms of being able to handle increased flow, which is what the whole point of putting the expressway was, was for that. So whatever we can do as a block to support whatever resolutions besides sending letters, we are very, we're very welcome to do so, and we're very happy to engage however you think we should engage. But it is, it is very challenging. And having lived there since 1990, I can tell you it is significantly different, and I'm on the north side, not the south side of the street, just the difference. So whatever advice, Mr. Beckman, do you think we might be able to do?
Well, I have a question.
Yes.
I, I have a hypothesis. Did, did you notice any difference after the Griffin was built?
No.
No? It would, that didn't impact it?
No. No, not at all. Not at all. I wish I could blame them.
Yeah.
Just because it's another big entity with more cars.
Or actually, sound bouncing off the building.
Right, that's...
I would say, this was an issue well before the Griffin was put in, well before the Griffin, and I don't think that that has had that significant of an impact.
I'll, it's been interesting following this issue for the last few months, and I've probably been to Lansing maybe five times on this topic. And I think my view has changed a little bit, because I've had to think about noise differently. Usually, I'm focused almost entirely on the noise generated from cars, but there's also the noise that's related to the environment. The fact that they resurfaced I-696 could change the tire noise.
Absolutely.
And it's supposed to, right?
Yeah, and because they put, you know, they put rain protection on the road, that the grading of the road might actually make the road more noisy. So when you do that, and not a wall, maybe it's, maybe it adds more noise, or the installation of a taller building might cause the noise to bounce. And then we have the challenge, I live, so I live on Devonshire, so I'm acquainted with the noise, let's say it that way. And I know that, you know, the, what we affectionately call the ditch is a major influence on the noise, because it, because you go down and then back up, it almost encourages people to be loud at that place.
But it also...
It's just interesting and...
But it also allows the sound to rush and echo. In my house, I have this little cat, 14, who has a voice, but if she's downstairs, you come up our side stairs, up to the bedroom, where we have our bedrooms. If she's at the bottom of the stair and is caterwauling at 5:30 in the morning for me to get up to come down and feed her, it is certainly much louder, because sound travels in a confined space, and it gets louder than if she comes up into the bedroom and meows at me. So it's the same thing, the way the ditch is. It, it just makes the sound get bigger and louder.
So in having gone to Lansing, I have a new appreciation for making sure that they're aware of our issue. And however you want to describe it, my opinion might be different than yours slightly. So giving them your opinion helps them shape the legislation that might drive MDOT to do something different. We know 15, 20 years from now, we're actually going to have to tear up that whole intersection anyway. There might be something we...
Where the ditch is.
Where the ditch is, because it's hitting that 50-year-old mark.
Yes.
And we're going to have to redo that whole thing. So we don't want to wait 20 years, but we've got to feed Lansing with the right information.
And those are, that's things I can take back to the block and just ask them, oh, here's some points that you can send to these two ladies, and so that they have more fuel to the fire.
Absolutely.
You know, hindsight is always the best, but you know, when they were talking about putting in 696, Pleasant Ridge did have the opportunity to build the, like they did in Oak Park, to cover up the ditch here, and to encase it, so that everything went underneath, and it would have been a park and a plaza. And City Commission at the time said, no, we don't want to do that. That would have solved the noise problem.
Sure.
But that's hindsight, and so I don't know in the future if they go, when we won't be here, but when it's time to tear it all out, that might be something for future councils or commissions to have in notes somewhere that go back and take a look at building the plaza.
Right.
Because...
And then, and then step one for Lansing was, and I said a pun, and I didn't mean to up in Lansing, it's like, why can't we just set a good tone about this? And they're like, oh. It wasn't intentional, but it came out that way. Phase one is at least take care of the car piece. Make it less comfortable for people to be, to have noisy cars. And if we get the cars to be a little quieter, to train people to be less noisy, then there's less of a need for a wall or other things. So that's what this current piece of legislation focuses on. I know that State Rep Helena Price is also working on some other pieces of legislation around signage and things, so that people are, know that these are enforcement zones. Right now, any enforcement zone sign on Woodward is temporary. We aren't permitted to put our own signs on Woodward. So that's in the works. And then they've also had meetings with people that have new technologies for measuring sound for specific vehicles, because part of the challenge before is, and our officers could tell us, is it's actually hard to catch somebody that has a noisy car, because it's usually a car to measure, or maybe a car to catch them, or it has to be in a certain place. It's actually kind of hard.
That's what we've heard from the state police as well.
Exactly.
Yep.
So there's technology that's making that easier.
Yeah.
So Natalie Price had a conversation with some of those technology makers, and that's in the works. So you'll hear more.
Okay. So even if, even if the best piece is getting everyone on the block to send their letters to, and maybe target, can you, can they put pressure on MDOT to be more responsive to the communities that are being impacted?
Sure.
That would be beneficial.
Thank you.
Mr. Beckman? And I don't know what these devices cost, or, my mind goes to like a community science project that, similar to how the library, they, you can measure lead, they give you the equipment to measure lead, let's say. And I, too, live on the same wall, I'm on the north side of Millington, and I don't know, six or eight or 12 houses, and also on Kensington, had some sort of measuring device, whether or not they, they took it as like authentic, good, true data, at least like we could kind of show directionally how far off the mark they are. If these devices are, I'm just making this up, but 50 bucks on Amazon, I'll get one tomorrow and put in my backyard. Maybe we could get like a...
Let me know.
Google Notes, and just everybody just share their data and create...
If this exists, if this exists, there's no problem on Woodside, all of us purchasing those things to generate data, absolutely.
Right. You're like, yeah, you might be ready to fall and all this kind of, like I just picture bolting it to my porch and reading it every week or so, and at one point, then instead of, but do you know, are they like 50 bucks, or like 500 bucks, or?
So add four zeros.
Geez.
Okay, no.
To get an accurate measurement is really expensive, but it's true for practically anything you hang on a road, it's just all expensive. So, but, but I wouldn't lose that thought, because it's a budget issue for somebody. And if you think that measuring is important, let them know, because then they can budget it in. And that's, has been my feedback to both Ms. Price and Ms. Scott, is as we talk about budget, let's make sure we have budget in for a pilot or something to take care of. We're not the only area...
That's right. And just to shut something down with, well, what data do you have that's supporting your decision is how many years old?
Exactly.
That we need to, we need to make. So this has been very helpful. Thank you so much for listening to me and for being supportive of our block, and we'll get to work.
No worries. If you want me to come to one of your block club meetings and talk about it, no problem.
We'll just invite you to the summer party.
Before you go, though, I wanted to thank, I wanted to thank Woodside for doing this, though, for getting together and putting together the petition, and for really working together and doing it in such a nice way. So, you know, it's a great time, too, as we are talking about more noise, so I appreciate it, and I think we all just need to stay at it and, and keep the conversation open.
Yeah, well, I think that's the big point, is we need to realize, okay, it might be 20 years down the road before they're addressing the ditch and everything again, but the, which means this is the time, right, to really get going on...
Just, if we can just get the data started, I think that's, that's the key.
Right, and to continue to push, right?
And continue to push.
And to keep the conversation open.
Yep.
And it's a great time. I mean, people are having the conversation now finally, so just community support towards the, the goal. So thank you, thank you, and thank Woodside.
I will, I will.
Thank you.
You said that to Representative Scott and Price?
Yes.
Did you contact Senator McMorro's office?
No, but I will.
Okay.
I know she's been thoughtful on it, too.
Yes, yeah.
Right.
And then you're, it's going to get weird starting in March also, because they're going to start with the construction, so it's only going to be like Wood, 696 will only be going westbound at a certain point, and the eastbound, we go down to like the Davidson's, so...
Oh, wonderful.
Yeah, so it'll be weird, maybe it'll cut the noise in half for a little bit, but, you know, it's a, it's a long-term project here.
Yeah. Well, and we are glad that the roads are getting the attention that they need.
Yeah.
What we don't, what we didn't want, and we talked about that, that, yeah, it's a pain to have, you know, year-round barrels, but it's doing what has had to be done, that hasn't been done.
Right, absolutely.
But we don't want our issue to get lost in all the, the other things that are going on.
I think the key is, it's not just our issue, it's...
No, a lot of other communities is the same.
If you look around state roads all over the state, housing has gone closer to state-owned roads, so we're not the only ones that have this issue. And the vote on the House was eight to two, so clearly other communities are facing this issue.
Yeah.
Yeah. Thank you.
All righty, thank you. Thank you.
All right, City Manager, got a report?
I don't have anything specific. We've talked about everything that's coming up and happening soon, which is a lot, but any questions about anything happening around town?
None for me.
No, sir.
Thank you. Any other business?
One final plug, take the survey, please.
Right, I'll, I'll just make a note of something that came to our attention a few weeks ago. Someone wrote us a letter with concern for our flying of the pride flag, and this letter came to us, it was written to all of us ahead of Pride Month, which is an interesting time to send the letter. There were some inaccuracies in the letter. It was written anonymously, so we don't know who wrote the letter to the City Commission, and we don't know that the person was actually a Pleasant Ridge resident. So just to say it to everyone, if you ever have something that you want to talk about with us, it's okay to come to a City Commission meeting, however comfortable or uncomfortable a topic it may be, we have conversations all the time about things that are unusual. The letter also mentioned that we didn't give citizens an opportunity to talk about our flag policy, and we actually did. We had this conversation back in 2018, where we decided to put the POW MIA flag up permanently. We have a flag policy, and we're very proud as a city to fly the pride flag during the month of June, or to leave one permanently displayed here in chambers. And we're not limited to displaying these flags, we might decide to display other flags at some other time, if that becomes something poignant for us to do. So whomever wrote the letter, please feel free to reach out to me directly. If you'd like to talk about it, I'd be happy to tell anyone at all about the meaning of the flag and why it's important to help residents feel proud about where they live and... and the people that they live around. It's a great place for everyone, and I have absolutely no hesitation for having the flag up. So, I appreciate your sending the letter, sending it anonymously, not so much, but please reach out if you have any comments. Thanks very much. And with that, I think we're ready to adjourn. Happy Pride Month, happy Juneteenth, happy, celebrate June.
Yeah, thank you.